This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, welcome everybody to April 6th meeting of the Monterey Select Board in downtown Monterey in Town Hall. My name is Stephen Wise from the chair and I'm present.
Justin Maycock present, John Wijnaldum present.
Okay, so let's jump right in. So I guess Mark's not.
I am for 12:15, so you can go do the other stuff.
Okay, what about the treasurer?
12:30.
Oh, it's 12:30. Then we're gonna go into the first thing in all business, number one, town administrator items, update on human resource proposals for handbook update.
So the Collins Center did say that based on their past relationship with us, they will do it for 6,500.
Okay, so we have a proposal from the Collins Center for 6,500, we have a proposal from the other organization.
HR Malin for 5,500.
5,500? Justin, did you get anywhere with that?
Yeah, so I asked Michael Harrington, the attorney, because he had said he could do the work for the 6,500. And I, but I said, would you be able to draft a proposal or schedule time to come in and speak with the board? And he said, I can do either or both. I said, I thought it would be good to start with a written proposal, and I just told him that yesterday. I think if he's willing to draft a written proposal, then by next week hopefully, then we can compare the Collins Center versus what his proposal is at that point. My reservation with the Collins Center primarily was just based on their proposal, I don't know if they were gonna spend adequate amount of time meeting, meeting with people from the town. And also it seemed like they were gonna provide policies and then we could adopt them or not, but. If, I mean, if they come in at the same price, I think it would just be good to have a comparison.
So, so I would move to table this until the next, until the next meeting, which is the 13th. And then, but, but then if we don't have a proposal by then, I think we need to sort of move with the two people that we have, right? You don't wanna, you don't wanna close things down, so that would be my motion to table this until the next, until the second.
Second.
Okay. Yes?
Yes.
Go.
Yeah, I'll vote yes to table it, but I don't understand. We get, if we get an HR proposal and it's done, it has to be reviewed by town council. You just don't accept it as, it has to be legally reviewed by the attorneys for the town.
Or if you have to choose one before you send it to town.
Why don't we just have the attorneys draft a proposal? I don't understand why there's a two-step process.
Of the proposal of work?
Yeah, why not just let them do it? KP, they're our town council, why are we going outside town council to do a legal employee handle? It doesn't make sense to me.
Well, I thought, you know, KP had formerly said that they didn't want to be involved in Monterey in other capacities.
That's not what they told me.
So, somewhat, we, last week I was gonna reach out to Michael and then someone's gonna reach out to Brian and Mazur.
I did, I reached out to him and he said they can do a employee handle.
For that price?
Yeah.
So can he put a proposal together and then we'll just have multiple proposals? I'm not, as long as it happens in a timely manner, I think the more proposals that we can compare, the better.
Right, so why don't we have, get all the proposals together by the 13th of April? Whatever proposals are on, that we have in front of us on 13th of April, we'll make comparison.
But they can't act without majority, you know, I can't just come do a proposal, they have to come from the select board, as rule.
Well, we're soliciting proposals, we're agreeing on that right now, that we'll go out and solicit proposals. Like, I asked this attorney for a proposal. I mean, I didn't, he's not charged him to write a proposal.
No.
It's just, uh.
Okay.
You know.
I'll try, but. Okay, town administrator items under new business non. Review, second hand company you want to council, I'm finishing up the draft right now, we'll send separate emails.
Do you have a copy there? I did send it to you.
I make a motion we table the warrant from next week.
It needs to go to council this week because next week it's going to the printer.
Yeah, how long does it take to print?
Oh, it's gonna take at least a week for the council to review it, considering how non-speedy they are responses. And that when it goes on the 13th, then they print it and send it.
I understand that, but what's the, it's, it's beginning of April. We have at least four weeks.
No, you don't.
You don't have four weeks now.
Well, it's gotta be sent out, what, seven days before the?
No, it has to be posted seven days before.
Right, and when is it get sent out? It doesn't take two weeks to print out the warrants.
It could, yes, between mailing and printing, it could take more than two weeks. This is the schedule that we all love already.
But if I'm not, if I'm not mistaken, the mailing, there's no requirement for when the mailing has to happen, right? It just needs, the only legal requirement is we have to post it seven days in advance.
Correct, but you would like them to arrive at people's houses before the meeting.
Of course, yeah. My only thing is, I only, I haven't thoroughly reviewed this because I've only had it for two days and I could use more time to review it. One question, the only thing that I was wondering is, the attorney Riley was gonna help write about the bylaw review committee, write an article about the bylaw review.
Yeah, I think I'll have him do it.
Did he respond to whoever sent that question to him?
Yes, he did.
So that person who ever received it didn't send it to me to put on there?
Well, I haven't received the wording.
You just said you did.
I received the response, he said he would send what should be put in the warrant, and he never did. And you know, the items that were tabled last week that were supposed to go onto the warrant aren't on this agenda, so the select board, it's our, it's our warrants, we should be able to put into the warrant what we want, and there's no time.
What items were tabled to be put on, that were tabled at the last meeting that were, that were to be put on?
I tabled my item agendas so we could get to the important issue, which was something at the end of the agenda.
What?
Yes. It was things to be added to the warrant that were bypassed at the last, the citizen petitions that were tabled were supposed to be discussed, and I tabled that discussion. It's my memory. I'm just saying, if our warrant, we should have tried to put into the warrant what we want.
There was no motion to.
There's no like time limit, we're not under any, you know.
You are, we're a time limit, by the way, so we do have, we do have an annual town meeting, it is a specific day and time. And working backwards from that, there has to be adequate time for the townspeople of Monterey to read and understand the warrant. You do have the moderator just walking in the room, you can, people, people confirm this.
That's not my point.
Okay, you wanna have, you need adequate time for the people of Monterey to be able to read and understand the warrant. And working backwards from that, you have, need adequate time for it to be printed and, 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 and sent. So, yes, we are, we are now at April 6th, okay? Town meeting is on May 7th, okay? So that is not a lot of time. Things happen, you know, printers are, you know, these, this, we have one, there's one printing company in town, Quick Print.
I spoke to Quick Print this morning and said, the turnaround time for the warrants is one day, two at the most. So it's not two weeks.
Yeah, okay, well, listen, I spoke to somebody at Quick Print and they said it's gonna take a week and a half.
Okay, well, one, one thing is that we don't, the budget's not even finalized yet, so, I don't.
Right, it doesn't, that part doesn't get sent to council, just the wording, he's just gonna check all the wording of the articles as they currently are. So next week, between this week and next week, you'll tell me the order that you want them in. And he'll have responded if anything needs to be corrected, and then it will go, you'll sign it and it will go to the printer.
Will Justin wants to add something to the warrant?
It is now.
Well, that's missing, I would like to add something to the warrant, I don't think a week.
So you guys.
And I don't know why we're asking your permission to handle our warrant, I don't understand.
We're not, we're not, John.
You guys can do it all then.
There's, there's, there's a certain, there's a certain method in which this is done, it's done the same way every single year. I have, I have Mr. Coburn is, is here, he was almost like for it last year, he's gonna testify to the fact that there's a certain thing. Mark Maycock has been the moderator.
Do what you want, just do what you want, Steve.
There's a certain.
You wanna listen, do what you want.
I see, okay, so you're, so you're accusing.
No, just, I'm just saying, do what you want.
Doing what we want, okay.
I take exception to that because if we did what you wanted, John, nobody would get paid, no bills would get paid because you don't come in and do anything, you just make arguments about.
Okay, but, please.
See, one point.
Yeah.
John, when you table something, that doesn't carry it to the next meeting. When something's tabled, this is a tricky off, if you wanted those things on, to be discussed today, you had to send that in or notify Steve or Melissa to add them.
Well, we have actually done both because just the first thing we tabled today about human resource, we tabled exactly, so we actually do both ways, but.
But you specifically said it this week.
Yeah, so. Not specifically on the, not specifically on the, on the agenda.
So I could use more time, I have not been able to thoroughly review this since Monday afternoon. Could we do this next week?
I would suggest you schedule an additional meeting then because.
Yeah, I'm happy to meet Monday.
The 13th is the day that it needs to go to the printer, so I need to have time to send it to council between now and 13th.
Council hasn't been.
He's not very speedy and responsive.
Very responsive.
Hey, can it get sent to the printer the following week?
Nope. I'm not here.
It, by the way, so Quick Print, again, they're, I think they're the only game in town, they're printing everybody's town warrants, not just Monterey's. So if you think of all the other towns that are, that are gonna be sending warrants their way, that's, that's a lot of, those are a lot of folks, I don't know how every town does it. And I don't know if they, they print some, I mean, they print them in the house if they have a small population. But generally, that's why you wanna build in as much time as possible so that, so that you're not, you know, you're not scrambled.
Well, then it's, it's my mistake because I, in the past, I only saw the warrant for the first time on Monday and I haven't reviewed it thoroughly enough to feel comfortable to send it to council at this time.
So I'll make a motion that we table this till next Wednesday.
Do we wanna meet Monday?
I'll do Monday.
I'm happy to meet Monday.
But it's not, not during the day.
I'm happy to meet Monday too.
So I'm making a formal motion?
Yeah, make a formal motion.
Does Monday work for you?
What?
Does Monday work for you?
I, look, I, I will, I'm committed to getting this warrant out. It's gotta be Monday, it's gotta be Monday, I'd like to do it, I'd like to do it now. So that there's absolutely no possibility of, of a mess up, however, if the, if the other board members wanna, wanna kick it down to next week. If it works out, it works out, if not.
Well, there's also no requirement on when they need to be mailed, and I understand you wanna do it sooner than later, but there really, there's no legal requirement on when they need to be mailed.
But just as you needed, so you got this on Monday, and you said I needed at least two days, I need a couple of days to look at it, right? Okay?
Yeah.
Just like that, think of the towns person, they need a couple of days to digest, to digest this before they go to town meeting. So everybody needs, these warrants are lengthy, and everybody needs a certain amount of time to, you know, to mull it over, to understand what's, what's going on, we give us a lot of, just a lot of language here. So we wanna, we wanna try to, if we can, give them the most amount of time to digest it, not the least amount of time. So, so we, you know.
I agree, unfortunately, I just haven't had that.
No, I understand, I understand, I'm just, I'm just trying to, just trying to work out the process here and.
The, the, so we'll meet Monday and, and agree to the warrant and to send it to council at that point.
When are we gonna get the art, articles to Melissa to put on the warrant?
What articles? I, we've been talking about articles and we didn't have it.
What, what article, what article, what are you talking about?
Well.
What do you wanna, what do you wanna put on, what are you gonna put on the thing?
The one that has to be corrected.
Well, yeah.
From A and G's office.
Yeah, so.
So I thought we already sent that to, I thought, I thought that was already a motion.
Is that something that we could add while council is reviewing it, if council writes that article?
You could also amend it on the floor if you had to. If it was done with a recall, if it was done with a recall petition. Council will be there, actually, that's the other thing we gotta make sure, Melissa, to make sure that, that, that council, that council understands that they, that they need to be there.
Well, what if, what if council reviews these articles to give them a head start? And if council's writing the article about the bylaw review committee, you won't need to review it, we can just add that in, no?
I think it's a great idea, I would make a motion that we, that we take this current warrant, we send it to town council and at least have them make comments on what we currently have.
No, I don't agree, the warrant articles have X's for amounts, the sum of XXX.
Like, those are numbers that I need to get from the accountant once I, we've confirmed that these are right.
Right, you just gotta work on the legal language, you wanna work on the amount.
Article 20, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 16 times. I mean, well, I'm not approving that, I mean, that's my decision.
All right, but what's 16 times?
Article 20 is listed 16 times as article 20.
So XX is to be put in the article number.
It's placeholder so that it, so the select board, so this is how it works on the select board, okay?
Well, I'm not signing something.
We have it in whiteboard this regularly.
You're not signing it today.
So the, the select board then decides with what, in which order the articles are placed upon the warrant, okay?
I give up, I give up, you do whatever you want to say.
So, so, so I would make a motion that we send, that we send this language to council for, for their, for their changes and whatever. I would also, and at the same time, we would ask them to send in the correct language for the bylaw review, so that's my motion. Now, a second?
Yeah, so this isn't finalizing what's on the warrant, it's just that they can look at this.
No, this is gonna say, hey, this looks good to me, you know, as it is right now, or, no, you guys really messed it up, you gotta write this, this, and this. It is not, it is not with, it could be on the warrant, it's not gonna be, it's not gonna have all those X's on there, it's not, it will have, it will have the proper amounts. It's just to check the language itself so that the townspeople are not voting on something that is not proper.
So this is not, this is not agreeing to the contents entirely of the warrant, it is only sending what we have to town council at this moment.
It's just, I, let me make it very clear, put it in a minute, it is just to verify that they, that the language that's used here is legal and that anybody, that, that it should disappear on the warrant and townspeople vote on it, that they're voting on something that is legal and actionable and.
Where's the Lake, where's the Lake Garfield Preservation District in this warrant? Which article is that?
There was no presentation for that to be on here, there was no agreement by the board to put it on there, and there was no citizen's petition.
Yes, there was, and the lawyer approved it, and it said it had to go on to the warrant. In an email to the select board.
They said, I didn't get that, so.
Remember that, so how can we approve something?
Are you talking about the citizen's petition that had the tax district attached, but on the front it was to lower the tax?
And the lawyer said that had to go on to the warrant.
As citizen's petition.
Yes, where is it on here?
As the actual article, correct, not the attachment.
It's, 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 yeah, the citizen's petition.
The citizen's petition stated to lower the tax levy or whatever by $250,000, the attachment had nothing to do with the article.
So in addition, in addition, so, let me amend my motion then. In addition to, in addition to the town council looking at the legal language, that they, they will determine, they've received all the citizen's petitions, and they will determine which ones go on the warrant. And if they determine that they go on the warrant, it goes on the warrant.
They already did that. Attorney Riley did say that the tax district should be on the warrant, so we'll just add the tax district as a citizen petition? And, and the bylaw review committee article.
Is that on, is that on here?
No.
Just to be able to clarify that, because I can't add the citizen's petition for something that didn't give an article wording, didn't say to see if the town will vote to create the following tax district. That's what people are signing, what they sign, I don't know if I need that, I'll go get it if you need me to.
No, but it's fine to put it on if it was slightly different, that's fine, or like if there were multiple sheets. He's, Attorney Riley said to put it on the warrant.
Correct.
I'm comfortable putting it on the warrant as citizen's petition like Attorney Riley said to do.
Then why don't we just wait till next week and do that, and then, I don't understand what the Russia's.
I'll just verify it when I send the warrant, about how I like that one word.
So can I forward to the town administrator the, the, the email from Attorney Riley with regard to the citizen's petitions? Wait a minute, actually, can I do that?
Yeah, I thought it was already sent. You don't have that email.
Surprise, surprise. It didn't, the tax district, preservation tax, Lake Garfield Preservation District didn't get on the warrant, again, nice.
Okay, I just wanna clarify, so when you sign, when you sign a warrant, I'll look at you, Justin, because you're looking at me. If, if it said that you were signing a warrant to get rid of the transfer station, but attached to it was something about closing the library, would you want both of those documents attached if you thought you were signing to close the transfer station when it's really, the attachment was about closing the library? Each of those would need an article that people knew they were signing.
Well, we could always, if there's any confusion, we could just, as a select board, add it as an article.
Right, so you need to vote on that if you're gonna add the tax district, because what the people signed was to lower the tax levy by $250,000. And I believe John Wijnaldum was the one that contacted all of our state representatives about the last NAFU with any, with any citizen's petition. So I would think we'd wanna be super careful on this one, especially since the tax district has had issues in the past.
Okay, so here's, so here's, here's what we're gonna do, if it's okay with the board. I will contact, I will contact Attorney Riley. I will have, I will confirm, I will confirm that, that the, that whereas it is a citizen's petition for, for a tax district, I will get, if it is, if it is confirmed, I will get his, he will, he will draft the wording for the, for the, for the warrant, and, and that wording would be available on Monday.
You can't draft it.
Why can't you draft it?
Because it's a citizen's petition, you can't author a citizen's petition.
All right, listen, so the, the idea is, the citizen's petition currently is, how many pages long?
Wait, I'm gonna go grab it, because I wanna get all the.
The lawyer already sent us what to do. I don't know why we keep debating the same issue over, he already sent you the email.
I'm not, I'm not debating anything. I'm having a conversation.
I thought we agreed to push it off to Monday. What's the problem?
If, well, I think if, if we can, if we can, all right. I think that's fine, because we're really, the, the thing is it needs to be posted by like Saturday, the 30th of April. That's the legal requirement, is it has to be posted at the, posted places at the end of this month, it's the 6th. And we'll mail it with hopefully as much time as we can possibly allow for people to review it.
And it gets posted on the website too, doesn't it? Posted?
Actually, I think, I think the bylaws provide that we have to mail it, which would imply that it would have to be mailed at the same time it was posted.
Which is only seven, I don't think it says when it needs to be mailed. Right, so you'd like to give people more time than less.
I know, you were saying you could mail it after the post, I think that might be contrary to the bylaw.
I don't think so, I mean, you wouldn't want to, but I don't think it's contrary to the bylaw, it just says it needs to be mailed.
So we're gonna, so we'll, we'll move, we'll move all this till, till Monday. I, I just want the board's permission for me to have the council.
If that were true, you could post it seven days and mail it so they got it the morning of the meeting. That can't be the meaning of the bylaw.
No, yeah, and we're not going to do that.
Yeah, the meaning of the bylaw is that, is that.
So that means media mail, which, you know, is longer than seven days.
Longer than seven days.
You can double check with the post office, but I'm just sure media mail is.
Well, I just postal service comes so slow.
Aren't the warrants posted on the website?
Yeah, but as everybody's pointed out, not everybody has high-speed internet here and it's ability to get it.
So you'll figure out about the bylaw review committee article and the.
Yes, so may I, may I contact Attorney Riley to, to discuss all these items here and so that we can have everything available for Monday?
In, in particular, if the bylaw review committee article and the Lake Garfield Tax District citizen's petition.
I'm good with that.
And you'll share his written with us, right?
Nope, I'm gonna have a secret, secret meeting, and then maybe a leak out.
So is that a yes, you're gonna share it with us?
I will, everything, everything was, everything that Attorney Riley is going to, is going to say, I'm gonna have him write it in an email so that there's no question of any kind of subversive or deep state government.
What do you, he's already written to us, I don't, what are you, okay, do it.
Well, we need the wording of the bylaw review committee.
Yes. Bylaw, by law review.
He was supposed to send that to me.
Oh, so, and what happened?
He didn't send it.
So it seems like it's his problem. Okay, can we, can we go on?
Can you vote on that first and then tell me what time the meeting's gonna be on Monday?
Six o'clock, right?
Six o'clock, so, okay, we, fine, six o'clock.
Okay, you vote on the motion to send.
Okay, so, so first, the motion for me to contact council to vote, to get the explicit language for bylaw review committee and the, and the Lake Garfield Tax District proposal.
And sending the warrant, correct?
And sending the warrant, and sending the warrant, second. Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, then. All right, so, and we have to make a, do we have to vote on, on having a meeting on, on Monday, or are we just having the meeting on Monday? Having a meeting on Monday, okay, we're having a meeting on Monday, any objections in the audience, nobody?
Can we jump to the people that are here?
Yeah, that's, that's my next, that's the next thing since, uh, 12:15, Mark. So one of the things that, that I think that we finally did here on the select board is to make a policy that out, that the select board meets with the moderator hopefully within 30 days of the, of the, of the town meetings.
Thank you.
Okay, so I'm glad, I'm glad we got that sealed, chiseled in stone, then we can, then we can change. So, so let's have that discussion, shall we? Okay, the board had a vote, because of COVID, the vote, the board voted to have the meeting at the pavilion, which I, that, does that sound like, does that sound like a?
That's reasonable, absolutely.
Okay, unfortunately, you know, that's the way we are. It's also my understanding that the board voted to, to pay particular attention to the parking issues that, that has occurred because of, when we do have meetings at the pavilion. Or, or any time. Or any, well. I mean, you know, the parking is certainly an issue up there. And, you know, we don't have any good-sized parking lots in this town, so, you know, it is, it is what it is. So, let's see, what else, what else did we, what else did we, did we discuss about that, about the meeting in particular? I mean, obviously, we, the date is 7th. And what was it, 9:30, it starts at 9:30 usually, 9:30. Are there any, so for microphone handlers, we, we just, there was an article that was put in the Monterey News, right? I saw it, I saw it, and did we get any volunteers?
Received anything, what, have you received anything?
No, but, are you volunteering?
I'm volunteering.
Well, they did a great job last time.
Okay.
I don't think that you need to discuss this in a select board meeting.
Well.
You made it the podium and I.
Well, we had a discussion, the one discussion I've had in three or four years with some people and decided to do it, but then I kept hearing that there were difficulties finding people.
Okay, I'm not, I'm not difficult to find.
And I, and I think that it's, I just, I personally think that anything we can do to make everyone feel welcome to express their opinions, and we all know with an aging population, to have to get up and go to a microphone might impede someone.
I'm not going to volunteer janitor services yet, but I will speak to you this evening, and if you need a second, then I'll ask them to be second.
And I, I think it makes it go smoother and quicker, I think it goes smoother and quicker.
I, I can't promise, because she's her own person, okay, but I will get back, not Monday.
Okay, but I will get back, not Monday, I'll get back, I'll get back to you.
And you don't care if you wear shorts?
It's, I mean, this is-
He has to decide.
Well, so here's the thing, so you should be aware, until 9:30, I have no power, there's none, I have nothing. At 9:30, it happens. It's up to the select board to completely set up the place, timing, and all the, everything else that's involved.
But they're worried about my shorts, do you have an opinion about that?
I, you know, last town meeting, annual town meeting, shorts might have been a little-
Unless I wore them, but I think I wore shorts, actually.
But it wasn't thanks to you.
All right, thank you.
I remember last year you sent us a pre-letter after the last meeting.
And I've forgotten.
Well, these were some of the issues that were covered, again, the venue, because we had one before where we planned and planned, or I was told it was gonna be in the pavilion, got switched to the firehouse at the last minute, that's not happening. And we talked about the microphone and the parking, those are issues.
What about contacting town council, is that a result here?
That was just, I thought it was interesting that town council was reviewing citizen's petitions, which I had never heard from of this happening before. I know that it's, in various towns across the state, they do it differently. I understand from my moderator association. And I just thought, if this is what's happening now after the last meeting, the town council was contacted, I just, I wanted to make sure that this was a completely equitable across the board, that, you know, everybody, every citizen petition should get the same treatment.
But do you want permission to contact town council before every meeting? So all the logistics legally can be worked out before you stand up and conduct the meeting?
That certainly would be helpful, because I had to talk to him the last time because of that issue. Because he had found the language that wasn't acceptable, and we had to discuss the scope.
So don't we have to authorize Mr. Makeup to be able to contact town council?
And make, that's a good motion, you know, I would make a motion that we, that we will do authorize the moderator to contact town council to, for discussion of any, of the warrant, if they have any questions.
I'll second that.
Yes?
Yes, yes.
Anything else that we can do to make your life as a moderator easier?
No, I think, I think you got to just-
I do want you to know that last year there was a problem with parking, and the police chief was on it, and he said, a number of people, I think, happened again, he's aware of it.
I spoke to him also, and he will assign, he will assign extra personnel.
Yeah, no, I mean, even when it was in the firehouse, it happened, the people would get stuck.
I'm not lying, you know. So we're not repeating what happened last year.
Also, people were parking on private property.
Yeah, yeah.
The only other thing is cart, so that's all set, right?
Right, right. And the other thing I know you discussed is, again, something, it's hard for me to get too involved in electronic voting. But that was another issue which I've been bringing up quite periodically over the past decade or two, and I see now that somebody's addressing it. But, you know, as moderator, if I have to sponsor it, you know, it gets into sticky stuff. So I'm glad that someone's taking the ball around.
Yeah, I guess the, I guess the atmosphere, so we probably should have done it a while ago, because at one point, these electronic voting places were giving you like one year free, and then they're charging you. Now, apparently, they're not doing that anymore. So it is a path that Monterey is on to get, to get done.
And, you know, I'm fully aware of a lot of the issues. There's a speed thing, because it is a little slower than a voice vote. So everyone understands that I'm not going to, every single vote asks for electronic voting, or at least that's the way I understand from most moderators. But certainly, things that need to be counted, you know, may motions, but, you know, certain small recognitions and things like that, if it's overwhelmingly a majority, it is quicker. And that's part of what we can do to shorten the meeting and make it more efficient. And so that's gotta be kind of a hybrid.
By the way, if, since you do have discussions with other moderators, if somebody does have a company that they like, okay?
It's on the list, or I'll go back and look and see what I can- Yeah, no, it periodically comes up, people talk about, oh, have you tried this, or have you tried that? I'll see if I can get into the library, the servants, and see what experiences they've had. It's certainly out there.
And then you gotta figure out if you would work in a situation like the pavilion where, is there a Wi-Fi repeater, or how does that work?
I, the technical parts, I understand there's some things, but we certainly have had a long time now other places, many of the much bigger towns, that they've figured it out, so it should be doable.
Okay, so is that, do you have any, are there any other issues that?
Not at this time, no.
Tell me this, okay, so I'm glad, thank you for writing that email, I'm glad that we're finally doing this proper, in proper fashion. Okay, and hopefully it's done that way in the future.
Thank you.
All right.
See you soon.
Okay, so let's get on to our 12:30. You were the treasurer, former Lupiani property. So what page? Treasurer? Oh. She's on. Unmute.
You have to unmute Sarah.
Unmute Sarah. Okay, turn your mic on.
There we go. Sorry, it's different than Zoom, I'm looking in a different area, sorry about that. Um, so we got a request from a Lupiani to purchase back a property that they lost in tax title. That, they lost it in, back in March of 2015. I've been going back and forth with the tax title attorney, Ron Mearonson, to come up with some figures of what our options are and how much is owed. I'm gonna recommend that we have the discussion today, but also that you guys think about all that I'm gonna present. And then we come back either next week or the week after that, after you thought, because I feel like this is gonna be a precedence that we're gonna set. And I want everybody to just make and consider the right choice. Does that make sense?
Okay, so you have, oh.
So I'll just basically give you a brief history from my understanding. The property, again, they purchased the property in 2000, or 1997 for $30,000. After they purchased the property, in 2010, we took the property and for tax-taking, for unpaid taxes, for $890.13. They did not make any payments or any payment arrangements, they went through land court. A judgment was decided in March of 2015 that the town would own the property. So we took property ownership at that time. I'm not sure of the history, I believe that they have contacted the town in the past to family members to purchase this back. Although the law does allow for that to happen, again, it's gonna set a precedence to what the town decides. We don't have to choose to let them buy back the property, but that is an option for them. Currently, there's about $5,000 that we could recoup in taxes, that does not include all the interest and fees, as well as $4,500 from the tax title attorney that would cost to pull it out of judgment. The concern, I do not believe that we should be landowners, we should put these things back on the tax roll. I just want to make sure we do our due diligence and also make, whatever decision we make will have to be precedence for future. And so that's why I'm a little hesitant to just make the decision for the money, although the money I agree with taking, we should consider possibly doing an auction if that's the route as well. So that's in a nutshell of where the money is at.
So, so if they were, if the family was paying the taxes from the last tax, the taxes that we received in 2010, the total amount would be $5,000, or would it be more?
Correct, because it was only for four, it was only for four years. The town cannot collect for taxes that we did not, while the town owned the property.
So the $5,000 covers five years, from 2010 to 2015?
Correct.
What's the 45, that's in addition to the 5?
Correct, that would be the legal fees that the lawyer had, we can recoup, that the lawyer will charge for us to, that has already charged, but as well as to have the judgment reversed.
So the, I'll get to you in one second. So how, what other fees has the town paid out to, or to take it, to take the property?
So we can only charge in the $5,000, that includes the taxes and the redemption fee, the $4,500 are the legal fees. We can't collect for any fees that any town employees or myself would cost to do this, only legal.
All right. Thank you for your inputs, Sarah, can you tell me the interest rate? That would be attributed to the-
The interest rate is 16% while it's in taxes. We can recoup 16%.
16% per annum or monthly?
Per annually, and we can charge the interest till to date for the interest for those prior years.
And the 16% is state law?
Yes, for tax title.
Wow.
It's 14% for regular taxes.
What's the property worth and what are they offering?
$30,000 is what the deed says, I mean, I'm sorry, the card says. They are waiting for us to respond with what it would cost us, because we can only charge for the taxes and fees. We can't get any extra money for that.
So currently, so it's, so the property is valued in 1997 at $30,000, but it's still currently, still currently assessed at $30,000? Is that what the assessment is, or does it mark the value?
Where is this property? She's frozen.
I don't know. Oh, everybody, is everybody frozen? Anybody else on this, on this Zoom that's listening?
Sarah's frozen.
It's cold out, that's why she's frozen.
Apparently not.
No, it is.
Well, that is the contrary.
She'll be back.
So. Well, it's interesting, it's an interesting discussion. There was another, I was on the board with her, there was another property like this, somebody missed the deadlines, or couldn't come up with the money, and the board, I believe, agreed to allow them to, to-
We actually tried to put this one out to auction a couple of years ago. And it got halted when we were gonna add the school to it. And then everything just fell through, and they didn't feel that there was enough properties to-
Because there were two properties that were offer auctioned last summer.
Back when we still had, they stayed during our counting.
Where is the property?
Sorry about that, guys, my internet cut out.
No problem.
Sarah, where is the Lupiani property?
We're in a dentist store.
Well, if we do collect this money, I think we should invest in better internet connections.
We should invest in better internet connections without getting this money.
That's true. Well, okay, so, well, we'll find out where, we'll find out where it is.
And how much, do you know how much?
I'd like to get the tax part out, because I like to know if that's the assessment, or is she coming back now?
She said it was the assessor's card, said $30,000.
Do you know how much acreage there is? I did a quick calculation, we're talking $40,000.
Yeah, yeah, hi.
It's 10 Lake Ave.
10 Lake Ave?
10 Lake Ave.
Yes.
From the lake for 30, oh, okay.
Melissa, would you like me to send you, or the board, whomever, I can send you the file card, the judgment, things like that? Would you like me to share that with you?
Yes, please.
Yes.
So the card says it is. It is .22957 acres. And it was sold for $30,074, and it is currently assessed at 92.2.
It's a good deal.
We can only charge $9,500.
Some interest, and that's, and we're not really making the 95, my bad. We've already paid out the air fee.
You're breaking up.
So of all that funds, $4,500 are legal fees that we've already paid out. So we're just recouping our money.
We're just recouping $5,000.
$5,045,000.
Well, but we already paid out $4,500.
Sarah, wouldn't they still have to buy the property? Because if we put it out to auction, aren't they gonna bid on the whole property?
So there's a few different laws, and Ron said he would jump on with us if we need, but there are some laws that will not allow parties who the town has foreclosed on to be part of the process. So this is something that Ron would vet, to see if they would be able to join the bidding if we were to do an auction.
Maybe we should talk to him for a few minutes.
So we can either take a sum of money that we're allowed to charge, or we can put it up to auction and see.
Right, but the law says that if the people that lost it can't bid.
Yeah, yeah. Well, she's not sure about that.
She's not sure about that either.
Why don't we send it to town council? Because I don't want to be setting precedent with no legal advice from anybody. She said we're gonna be-
I think, actually, I think that's a reasonable suggestion, of, you know, I'm certainly, you know, I'm certainly of two minds here. I think that we're a small town, we, you know, somebody's willing to, you know, somebody's willing to pay back the taxes. You have to have a little compassion. Doesn't sound like it's a, was a major tax dodge. And seems like a very, very small-priced property. So, so on the other hand, I wouldn't want Monterey to lose, the Monterey taxpayers to lose any money because of this. So, you know, you have to be, you have to be fair to everybody in town as well. And certainly, if, in there are other places where, yes, if you don't pay your real estate taxes, you don't give you a break. But I would like to, for Monterey, to be known as a town that would give you some kind of consideration beyond, beyond the law, if that's possible, as long as, again, as long as the taxpayers don't have to pay for it.
Steve, may I just qualify that? This process has been going on since 2007. So they were, by 2010, they stopped paying taxes. So, you know, compassion goes as a tool of the street. So, I mean, they might have their, I don't know who these people are, but they might have their reasons why they did that, okay? And it's not even an issue of compassion. But I think there is an issue of getting it off. The town should not be in the business unless someone grants them a gift and gives them a piece of property. They should not be in the real estate business.
This is, Sarah?
Yeah.
This is, is this an unapproved piece of property or there's a house on there?
There's a cottage on the property. I don't know if it's inhabitable, it just seems like a very small cottage.
It's four rooms, two bedrooms, one bath.
And so this cottage, I'm assuming is, is boarded up, hasn't been used, so somebody's there? They've never been using it, have they been using it? I don't think she would know that.
It's a town-owned property, so I would hope not.
Could have had a little hotel, could have made some Airbnb money. All right. All right, so, so you send all the information, the more information we have, I think, the better. I'm also personally going to, I want to take a look, I want to take a look at this reproperty. Especially you want to see if there's something used as an Airbnb.
No, I agree. Take a look at the property, I'm also. I'm sorry.
No, 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 I'm sorry to cut you off. No, I also would like the billing department to weigh in. Is it inhabitable, not inhabitable? You know, I mean, what is the situation? Because, I mean, what is the situation of this property? This is the first time.
And we could also consider if you wanted, I know a few years ago, they talked about doing possession auction. So if that's something you'd also like me to reach out to, I do know that Zico's group, Melissa, had sent me some information that they had did an assessment and the town was asked to invest some money, so it didn't work out. But we can also reconsider that, look at the list of properties, if we have one or two more. We can look at that side if we want to do an auction as well.
And then you'll, and then you'll, who's going to make a determination if, if we do go to auction that the, that the person can bid on it? And then the owner, previous owner can bid on it?
That will be our tax title attorney. Him and I have already had this discussion. There's a kind of a gray area because I believe it's the grandson of the person whose property it was. So that's the, the only issue, it's, it's more of that gray area that we'd be a little bit more investing time into see if it's somebody we would let consider to bid.
All right, so I, I moved that we tabled this to at least the next session and had a further discussion on it.
And send it to town council for. She said the tax title attorney is going to.
Let's first get the tax title attorney's opinion on it and then.
So the five thousand dollars in the line in the budget for tax title, is that for this purpose, like tax title?
For when they put somebody in tax title.
So who is the tax title attorney that she?
Berenson and Bloom, I believe.
Oh, so their attorney, the, of Lupiani's attorney?
No, Berenson and Bloom is the town's attorney for tax title.
Okay, so that, and they get paid out of five thousand, five thousand, okay.
Yeah, luckily, we only have one or two of them a year, well, if that, so.
Right, currently, we have three, one of them is in a payment plan. The other two, Ron and Berenson and I had discussed moving forward with foreclosure on the other two properties. So we can get them back on the tax roll. And that's what we were talking, if we could do an auction and see what else is out there. To make sure that we, the town gets their money back.
And that's the most important thing.
Would you like me to ask Ron to see if he can attend the next meeting that this will be about?
Yes, yes, although the next meeting is going to be at six P M. on Wednesday. Is that okay?
That's fine with me, I'll double check with him to see what his availability is.
Or you might be able to take it on Monday. I think Monday is just going to be, let's just devote Monday to one, one item.
One issue.
One and done. Okay, thank you, Sarah.
No problem, thank you, everyone, have a good day.
Thank you.
In the moment, second. Okay, second.
David, can you please take the motion?
Yeah, so I made a motion to the table for this discussion, to the next, to the meeting on when, next meeting, which is on Wednesday. Or to the meeting on the thirteenth of April. So that we have time to receive and review the information provided by the treasurer. Yes?
Yes.
Yes. Review minutes.
Can we go to number five for our guest?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Let's do that. Let's go back to number five, American Rescue Plan requests.
I think I'm up.
Yeah.
My name is Tom Menci, I'm part of the Parks and Parks Department. Soon to begin my second year of a three-year term. And I'm proud of what we're doing, we're, we're keeping the face of the town in good condition in a fiscally responsible fashion. The item I'm here to present to you, I think you've received electronic and letters about it as well as our administrator, the use of some of the American Rescue Plan funds for the repair and replacement of our rapidly aging playground equipment in Green Park. The master plan that this town has, which the most recent one, goes back a couple of decades. It emphasizes the importance of, you know, dedicating our time and our efforts to making sure that the open space and the recreational facilities in town are not ignored because it certainly adds to the value of town and the attractiveness of people living here. And children are part of that and families are part of that. And to have a up-to-date, functioning playground facility, I think, is, is important. I think it's in the spirit of the American Rescue Plan to consider the, the funding, partial or complete funding of the project because it, it certainly is in the best interest of the well-being of the citizens and the children who use it. Our goals are to put something tasteful there, we don't want something too distracting in terms of color. We want it to be functional, we want it to be something that offers the kids and every, anybody who uses it some challenges and fun. The action plan that we're trying to develop would call for citizens in town, families in town to give us their feedback and tell us what they're looking for. And many of the playground equipment people that I have contacted with also offer supervisory people to help install it, so we get some volunteers from town to, to put it up. The, the scope of the project, the entire fee schedule of the project, I, I don't have a specific number. I know that to redo the base of it would cost about ten thousand dollars. What the Parks Department is going to do, the Parks and Rec people are going to do quickly just to, you know, give it some, some upkeep until we get our feet off the ground and know which direction we're heading in, is to clean up the weeds that have grown into the existing base and put some new, new chips and mulch in there. The existing plan or system has a couple of swing sets. It has a one system that's geared to two to five-year-olds, another system that's geared to two, five to twelve-year-olds. Some of the new equipment that's available encompasses all of those ages. So we need a little direction from the families in town as well as some budget numbers to be more specific in which way we go. I don't know the urgency of the decision-making process in town in regards to the allocation of the funds that the American Rescue Plan has designated for Monterey to use. But I wanted to make sure that we, we got this on the books and you were aware of, of what we'd like to do.
Would you, so in, in looking at some of these designs for new playgrounds, is it going to be, is it going to take up more space than the current playground or is it going to take up less space?
I was looking at it to, I could play the same plot, the same space.
Now, it's also my understanding that the insulation, actually the insulation of playground equipment must be done by the company because there's a liability factor when it comes to putting together playground equipment and.
Correct.
So you cannot be, you cannot use volunteers.
Well, it would be supervised by the company, so perhaps that takes care of the liability. These companies.
I will say that, I did, when I was at college, which was not very long ago, we installed, or there were sometimes you installed playgrounds on school properties with volunteers. And it was a very formal program, and so I have to imagine that, you know, all the Ts were crossed and the Is were dotted because it was all over the city of Worcester at schools. Where volunteers were working alongside, you know, everything had to be vetted by the people from the company to manufacture.
All right, well, we're certainly going to look into it, obviously.
Yeah, we wouldn't let that one slip by.
Identify the town.
And it saves the town some money. You get a couple of supervised installers from the company there and we certainly check to make sure that the liability issue didn't fall back on the volunteers or the town. And it could be handled that way too.
Because there have been a few, I guess, over the years, there have been a few injuries that have taken place on, on this playground equipment, but just because people, I mean, it was not, nothing because of the equipment.
Way of the world.
They're right, but, I mean, luckily, I don't think anybody's really, really got hurt, I don't recall any.
If you're going to be doing, you might want to look into whether it should remain on top of the septic field or not.
That's the other, yeah, that's the other, that's the other issue. The current location is, is not, is suboptimal, as they, as they say. It is right, because it is on top of a septic field. So.
How old is the septic system?
When was the town hall redone?
Eighty-five, when was this place built?
When was the town hall was redone, two thousand?
That's in a flood plain, isn't it?
Yeah.
I would imagine it, it was done prior to the new Title Fives.
It wasn't, it wasn't, it wasn't prior to the Top of Five. But, yeah.
Considering it's close to the Conco Park, it might kick in a lot of different.
Right, issues. Right, so, so obviously, in addition to, to, to replacing playground equipment and you can take it back to the parks, obviously now also not interested in opening up again worms. Sometimes something's grandfathered in and may not, you know, you know, so there's going to have to be some, some, some study done. But I, I agree with.
Get some sanitation company to evaluate the current status of the septic system, right? Wouldn't that be the way to go?
Well, we're, we're just right now focusing on the playground equipment, but, but obviously, you know, yeah.
From experience, I'll say you probably have to go to the Concom on that one.
Yeah.
Can I ask a question? Has your committee determined how many children actually reside in Monterey?
Well, that's, that's part of the action plan, we haven't gotten there yet. I, I jumped, I maybe put the cart before the horse here because I didn't want our request to be put at the bottom of the list when it came to allocation of these funds.
Okay, Steve.
But I'll investigate the demographics and grandchildren too. Well, it's grandchildren, you get visiting teams that bring their children here. You know, you want the town to present itself in a.
For people who are using the ball field, they look, you know, they have a.
Little league or even the adult.
That's why it's next to the ball field as opposed to, because personally, I, you know, I think it should be over by the community center. I mean, but I understand that it's being used a lot of times by people who are on the ball field and their kids. I don't know if Parks have ever looked at that idea as well, or spoken to the community center folks, obviously.
Or casually, we did, and we just felt that utilization by children would be much greater here than over at the community center.
So I think this, well, listen, so I, first of all, I think the board should come up with a, I understand that the board voted to, to have people make suggestions on the use of the offer money, but I don't think the board came up with a date that they wanted everybody to, to start presenting. And my suggestion would be that, so that people don't feel compelled to like get in fast because, you know, so you don't have a, that the board come up with a date and publicize it so that everybody can get their requests and by a certain date and then you can all look at, the board can look at it and make, and make an analysis at that time.
Then you set up the webpage for, to set up the vote group?
It said, it said they'll be reviewed on a rolling basis, but I can see the value in setting a final date.
But doesn't this legislation say that decisions should be made by twenty-twenty-four?
Yeah, yeah, that's right, but it doesn't mean that the board, right, but you, but it seems like the board would like to spend some of the, on, you know, sooner than later.
Well, I don't think we could get this off the ground this fiscal year or this calendar year. That's why we elected just to upgrade it by cleaning up the base a little bit further.
But just for the formal presentations, my suggestion would is, is the board to fix a date, maybe the first of August, first of September, something like that, give enough, give it, give people enough time to present to you all their, all their proposals in a, in an actual proposal format. So this way you'd be able to do, Parks would be able to, to come up with a pictures of what it would look like, what you guys decide would be the, probably the best fit for, for town. And then have an actual pretty close cost of what that particular design is going to actually cost. Installation, maintenance, and what have you. So that the taxpayers can have an understanding of, of where that, you know, where that money is coming from and how it's going to be spent over time. So my, that'd be my suggestion to the boards is that at least you give everybody a certain, a certain date where everybody's proposal's got to be in. So this way, you know, nobody feels like they're being, you know, like they have to push. And you can do round phase, you know, round one, round two, you know, I mean, like, like that people do that for rewarding of rent or what have you. So phase, phase one is going to be for X, you know, you might even be able to say phase one is for X number of dollars, for X number of dollars. You know, or split it, you know, split it halfway into fifty percent, phase one, have your applications in by September first. And then, doesn't mean you're for ground, for shovel-ready projects, but the idea is you can be phase one. Or if you want to wait till phase two, if you think, if you're really delayed, and you're like, well, we're this, we're all just waiting till phase two, I'll put in my proposal by the same time in the following.
But I also think this process is good too where we can get a sense of what might be in the works. And also, you know, maybe if something doesn't fit anything that the supplier wants spending on, time won't have to be wasted drafting a specific proposal. But I think the playground would be a good use in general, I think.
Well, why don't we split the total park money in half and do two phases? The first phase proposal has to be in by August first, twenty-twenty-two, but we're only spending half the money, because we have two years. And then we'll do August first, because you need construction time between, you know, August of the year and the winter.
This all depends too on how much we spend at, or after town meeting, on things like.
Well.
Autrian voting and.
I don't think we're using Arcamike for that.
Well, I don't know, it depends.
Can't we just set up the process so everybody knows?
Yeah, I'm not opposed to it, I'm not opposed to having.
Well, you want to make the motion, Steve, so we can get this wrong?
Yeah, so the, so, so, well, actually, I voted again, how does somebody else do? I voted, I voted again. Yeah, so the, so, so, well, actually I voted again, how does somebody else do? I voted, I voted against this whole thing to begin with, so it's good, we're making, making the proposal. John, why don't you go ahead and make the proposal?
Well, my, my motion is that the select board adopt the program regarding the ARCAM money, it should be split in two phases, first half of the total amount, which I've forgotten, it's two seventy-six, maybe, two sixty-seven, somewhere in there. And all proposals for the first half of the ARCAM money funds should be submitted to the select board by August first, twenty twenty-two, which we already have the, the website set up, or supposed to be set up. And then the second phase would be the other, second half of the money and all proposals be submitted by August first, twenty twenty-three.
The only thing that I would, the only thing that I would add is, you, Justin's correct, you won't know if there's, there may be items are put on the floor that are, that are changed on the floor to pay for some of the warrant items through ARCAP funds, so there may be less than, than the monies that are, the full money that are allocated to the town. So I would suggest you just, you concentrate on the phase, on just the phase part, it will be a phase one, but there will be no, but you don't specify the money, and, and then there'll be a phase two. So then you don't know how much money you're going to have left. That would just be my.
So the, the two proposals, three proposals you have right now go over more than half of the allocation?
My, my other hesitancy to set up any kind of phase program is maybe there's a small expense, like maybe the select board agrees that funding this ambulance is a good expense, and we don't want to wait till August.
It's just a deadline for the proposals, it does have the deadline for making a determination.
But if we want to give ARCAM money to the ambulance before then, I think that would go against the phase program.
Well, the board can, well, the board has the right to, to, to spend ARCAP money's.
Yeah, but if we set up a phase program and we do surveys, you're expected to actually follow the phases. So if all of a sudden we're giving money to Southern Berkshire Ambulance in June, for example, we're not following the phase program where we accept them till August and then decide how, how to split them off.
Well, the money comes out of the account, the, the, the net is going to be what can be applied to that phase.
Well, listen.
We have time, we got two years.
Why don't you just make a, a deadline for, for one, for this round? And then if you want to be, have money left over for the next round, you make money left.
That's just not the way I see it, but.
But one proposal that may be submitted for the early round, if those funds have been already allocated, do you automatically put it into the second round, that same proposal?
They'd have to reapply, I would think. So what do you suggest?
I haven't thought this thing through.
The, 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 the challenge with ARCAM is that, is, it is, it seems like it's a lot of money, but it's not really a lot of money, you know, it's like, it's like, you know. It's like you just inherited a hundred bucks, that's great, you inherited a hundred bucks, but, you know, you need two hundred, you know, what are you going to do with it? So that's, so that's the, that's the, that is the challenge, and a lot of really great projects are, are going, are very expensive. Such as playground equipment. Yeah, by the way, the, this, the playground equipment should be addressed whether it's paid for by ARCAM money or, or town, or, you know, or the townspeople pay for it, because it's important, because you can't have deteriorated playground. So if for some reason this doesn't happen, I would, can, I would.
Oh, I think we consider the, the movement, and there are some private funding opportunities as well.
Maybe some grants or, or, you know.
Justin, can I ask you a question? You, last week you were pretty in, that the, the survey we sent out had to match what the requests were coming in for, so may I suggest that you guys actually, we, we can think about your deadlines and such, and actually set some parameters, because there's nothing on there about.
I don't agree with the deadlines. I don't agree with the deadlines.
But I'm saying, set some parameters, because last week you made a strong argument that you wanted it spent on the things that we asked in the survey, and we didn't ask for, about any kind of outdoor equipment or vehicles or ambulances. So you may want to revise the parameters of this and come up with a schedule and what kind of projects you're looking for.
I absolutely, I absolutely think that we should have more public input through public hearings and surveys, absolutely. I think public input is very important because this is discretionary select board money, and usually we're not, we don't have discretionary select board money to spend on whatever the select board wants. Town meeting has input, so I think public input is the number one priority here.
So maybe you could set a deadline for proposals to be in maybe closer to like October first or something, and then you take them all together and you have the community vote on which ones they want to spend it on, or they prefer to see it spent on so that you're not, this isn't just a, a free for all.
Well, I'm not, yeah, I'm in no rush to figure out exactly what that looks like though.
But so that people have guidance on what it is they're actually applying for and when they have to apply by, that's what I'm saying is, set a date with some parameters and, and what you intend to do with that, like, Tom may have come in here thinking that it's going to get approved for, you know, next year, but that's not your intention.
Well, I was expecting a check today.
So we, I think we've got a lot to discuss about ARCAM, but we also have two more proposals on the agenda.
Did I overlook a formal application?
No, it hasn't. We're, we're, this is a, a work in progress.
I just.
So, so, you know, it is a work in progress. You can try, try to figure out how, how to be fair to everybody, and that's not always the.
Well, I think, well, I'd go back to my committee and say we should go ahead, just assuming we're not going to get anything, and put the proposal together. But demographic survey is important, and the septic issue is important, right?
Well, so right now, you're in the parks department, so right now you need to, oh, not, I'm, I'm, this is my personal opinion, I'm not telling you. I'm saying that I would focus on the equipment that, that you'd like to have, okay? How much, let us worry about the septic problem, okay? I would focus on the equipment unless you also are in that business.
Well, again, running for one of the openings in the health department.
Well, then, then you'll have an opportunity, then you'll have an opportunity on the visitors, that, that. But I would say, I would, I would have, my suggestion for the parks department would be to focus on a very concrete idea of what you foresee over there, how big it is, how expensive it is, how, how much it's going to cost, keeping in mind, you know, what's, what's going on in the markets, you know, I mean, what, if you were going to buy it today, how much it would be, how much it would cost, what would be needed, what would be, whatever. And then also, and here's the reason why, we have, you know, fifteen children that use it every week and, you know, and, I mean, I mean. So I would, I would, I would work on that regardless of, of, of what the board decides with, with ARCAP funds, so that you have it ready to go. So then either it's ARCAM grants, tax bet, or, or goes on the warrant next year, you know, it could be something, because you know that it's something that, that, that the parks department would like, but so you have it ready. So that would be my recommendation, other members of the board may agree with this.
I see that as a logical approach.
Right?
Okay, thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming down.
So in addition, so in addition to the, to the parks, I see that there was a, there's also a request from the fire department to upgrade Rescue Five and to purchase an ATV for lost hiker, rough train situation. Over here. And, and, and the other thing was, right, the Southern Berkshire Ambulance request. Now they, that, alright, I'll wait till Melissa gets back, because I want to find out what the other towns have decided with, with that. Melissa?
Yes, I'm sorry.
So, so five B, the, the request from the fire department for, for the upgrade of Rescue Five, for purchase ATV for lost hiker, are they going to, are they, were they planning to come in?
I think Sean is on there.
Oh, Sean on?
Uh, but I was, they weren't aware that they had to come, this may had, just, the way that was mentioned last week was just proposals and that you would need with them at some point, so, but I believe that's.
Alright, so if they'd like to make a, I mean, if they'd like to do it, do it another meeting? Is Sean on here?
Sean, are you there? Sometimes he has difficulties under himself.
Okay, well, we'll see, we'll see if he's available. And. And then, yeah, and then, is he answering you back? Then the other thing was about the ambulance corps, did we find out if, if these other towns are, are?
I believe all the towns approved it.
Approved them at, at the rates that they're requesting?
As far as I know.
I would, I would personally like confirmation that the other towns are, because there are, because it has been, certainly been my experience that the ambulance corps asks for a lot, and, and some, and sometimes we're paying, sometimes we're not paying, sometimes we're paying less, we, Onray's been paying them five thousand dollars a year. And, um, but this year they're aware that we have ARCAP funds and, and, and they, however, I, so, you know, and they're asking for a lot more than the five thousand dollars a year. The reason why we always, why we did not give them the full amount, and we have an X, we have a former, um, select board member here, is because they didn't provide us with adequate proof that they really, I mean, that they really needed it, or where the money was actually going, and it, it's to the point where some towns were just giving them zero.
No, that wasn't the only reason, but, um, that was one reason. The other reason was that their allocation was based on real estate values. And when you go through it on population or on number of services, number of calls, our percentage, our, our, our share, if anything, went way, way down. The problem was that Ray Barrington wanted it done on real estate values, because if it was done by population or, or calls, they had most of the calls, most of the population, it was a tremendous amount of money, they were so unwilling to pay, they were thinking about creating their own ambulances. And, and I sent numbers around last year, which must have had, that have all those statistics. I don't, I don't, I don't know how they based their requests. Here, did I explain?
He came in, they wrote percentage, and we have, we are allocated seven percent. But he, but they, I don't think that they explained why we are seven percent.
I, I had a feeling it was a population percentage, but it was still not answer the, you know, amount of calls versus. I, I mean, it was.
How much did they ask you for now?
Seventeen thousand dollars.
Well, that's way down.
Yeah, they were.
They raised it on population, it says.
Oh, does it?
Which is how the ARCAP funds were distributed.
Got it, Sean.
But, well, that's good. So this is more, but what's interesting about this request is it's not to cover operating expenses by it. It's to purchase the new ambulance, because according to Caleb, they have the operating expenses under control now, and they can fund themselves.
That's big.
And also when he gets, they're waiting, hopefully they're getting their audit soon, and hopefully that might help us.
Well, that's why I thought a lot of, a few towns were not, not committing to that until they got the audit.
Well, he said we were the only town that asked for the audit.
Really?
In part of all, yeah.
Well.
The only one that's offered said they would only commit if all the other towns committed.
Well, let's wait for the audit, we asked for it.
Yeah. Because we're not prepared to move forward with, with.
Motion to table that with ARCAM.
Do, is there, there's no, is there a lot, there's a line on them on this, on this, for that, for the ambulance, or that was always, it was always our goal?
No, they, they're only asking for the ARC, no, it was only one year, I believe that we paid that.
I think it was two years.
Okay, maybe two. They're, they're only asking for ARCAP money, so shit.
I think that's ridiculous.
Doesn't make any sense to me.
It's not their business where they, where, where we get the money from. That, that's a clear sign that they're taking advantage of ARCAP. It has nothing to do with ARCAP, ARCAP, as Justin just said, discretionary funds decided by the board. They don't, you know, cash is fungible, and that's ridiculous.
I, I am personally comfortable with continuing to fund them at a five thousand dollar level. This would be the third year, because I remember that Ken was involved in, in the first discussion of this, so. So that would make this the third year, personally, but.
They're asking to, it's funny, because they need, you have it.
They say they need an ambulance.
Yeah.
They say they need an ambulance. I mean, this might just be a grant because of ARCAP funds.
No, 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 they, they.
They have new leadership since they were asking for the old request. And supposedly, the new leadership has tidied things up, and then it's getting an audit, and thinks that they can cover operating expenses with insurance, the revenue that they get, and I think that's a promising sign, and so.
So we're tabling this until we get the audit, right?
Yeah, okay, so we're tabling until we get, we get the audit, so that's the.
Tabling the fire department as well, right? Steve?
Uh, it, well, if they want, if the fire department wants to kind of make a, make a presentation like Parks does, then, then we will, and we'll put them on the agenda. Okay, so we're going to do, are we going to do minutes now or what else?
We're listing number four.
Oh, okay, so I'll say number four. Number four, scheduling executive sessions.
So, we obviously need to have more executive sessions, and.
So did everybody receive, sorry, did everybody receive a, a letter from attorney on, yesterday?
Yeah, we did, point of order, it's not received within forty-eight hours of the meeting, it was received within forty-eight hours. Not fast, so we, we can't discuss it.
So.
Not pertinent to this agenda.
Actually, it's pertinent to discussion of, of scheduling of executive sessions, and since it was received less than forty-eight hours before the, before the. Oh, I mean, pointing, I'm, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not.
We have to schedule an executive session.
Correct. I'm not having it, well, I don't, only, until, so, let me just, I forwarded that letter to town council, because I saw that it wasn't sent to town council. And I'd like to get a response from town council before anything is done with regards to this particular investigation, including scheduling of the executive session.
But we need, like, regardless of what he, he's going to say that the select board needs to meet an executive session, I mean.
The letter wasn't even addressed us, it was addressed to the investigator, so.
I don't understand how.
No, the, actually, the letter was addressed to the select board.
No, the letter was addressed to the attorney that investigated.
That we hired to investigate, you know, was, was sent to the select board.
But we can't, I mean, to even receive and talk, discuss the letter, we have to meet an executive session. I, I don't understand what the delay is.
I make a motion that we schedule the executive session pertaining to the investigation report.
Well, what, the question is, when are we?
Within the next two weeks.
Yeah, I think absolutely, we need to meet an executive session, there's no, I mean, regardless of, we need to meet an executive session, so I don't, what are we, even if we need to speak with Brian Mazer, we need to meet an executive session for that discussion, so what are we waiting for?
So I don't understand, so this agenda item is, is it just a general discussion about, about meeting an executive sessions?
Yeah, because we have, have agreed to meet again an executive session, but it's not happening.
Hold on, let me do, oh, yes, hey, you got, you're looking. Hold on, we do, oh, yes, hey, you're looking for Melissa, right?
Yes.
This is our transfer station.
Jim, how are you?
Sorry about that. Are you looking to schedule an executive session with the town, the town council?
No, the select board is trying to schedule executive sessions like we did with you in the emails, which you never responded to. There, you know the process. The report, the findings of fact were accepted. Now, the next step is to have executive sessions with the people listed in the complaint. That's what we're trying to get scheduled, the executive sessions with the select board and the employees listed in the complaint. That's all we're trying to do, it's supposed to do.
And if, and if you want to discuss, you know, uh, law letters too, I mean, that's all we need to meet. An executive session.
Right.
I don't understand. What's the holdup?
Is my understanding that the town and possibly the individual members of the select board may, uh, may. Be subject to liability. On discussions of what's currently going on with this investigation. Therefore.
So we're just not gonna meet? That doesn't make problems go away?
You can do whatever, you can, you can do whatever you, we'd like, however, I need to under, I need to have an understanding. Of, of, of what type of, of what type of liability exists. In order to have, in order to have meetings that pertain to this particular investigation. Justin, you have to understand something.
So why don't we meet with our council, I mean.
Yes, so, so now, if you want to have an executive session to meet with council, have discussion, you know, discussion, we can certainly, I certainly think that's a, that's a fine idea.
Yeah, I mean, there's no meeting, there's no executive session meeting thing, it's an absurd thing that's been going on.
Uh, it's also increasing our liabilities.
Uh, so when are we gonna meet an executive session? Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday?
You do it at, you could do it after the, after the meeting on the thirteenth, if council wants to come.
After the meeting.
It could be nine o'clock. That could be nine o'clock.
How about Thursday noon?
And, and but before you're meeting on Monday?
Yeah, I mean, I think.
On Monday, yeah.
I think the sooner.
So if you're, but if you're, the problem is, um, on Monday, let's see.
We're not having an executive session to meet with the lawyer, we're having an executive session to meet with the employees listed in the report.
I just. Oh, my God. I would suggest that an executive session to meet with the attorney.
Well, you're not scheduling anything, so let's schedule meetings and get things moving.
And actually reach out and actually do it. This is your agenda, make the motion and, you know.
So are we gonna meet Monday, the eleventh? Before other meetings?
What's the other meeting?
There weren't meetings.
You won't?
I would, I would contact council, see if they're available.
Yeah, I mean, that, this part of this is. Availability, but uh, can we, and we don't need to discuss scheduling in open meeting, we can email about scheduling. But we need, you know, just a commitment that we're going to meet.
Okay, so due to the barrage of, of open meeting, of open email complaints and violations, um, I'm, I'm not gonna have any discussions via email.
Okay, so we need to schedule a meeting now, then? So when are we? So when are, when are we scheduling? A meeting?
What is, what is, who is, what's the meeting for? Meeting with, what's the meeting for? Are you gonna have to post it in any notes?
Well, we'll have town council, good to have town council for executive sessions, and we agreed previously to meet again an executive session with. Uh, individuals, you know, that's why you enter executive session, purpose one.
There's no reason to have separate meetings.
What? I'm gonna get a glass, I'm gonna get a glass of water.
So like, we already agreed with them to.
There's no reason. You, you wanna have an exec, an executive session to, to speak with the employees and piss yourselves. Whatever the place are doing. You don't need a, a meeting with the attorney in advance of that, you've already had a meeting with him in advance of that. He can be at that meeting, if Steve is concerned about liability, although frankly, I keep, that's silly, but um. That can be discussed at that meeting.
Yeah, I don't think.
In other words, if you were considering doing anything.
Steve asked a good question, who do you want to be at the meeting? I think Don's saying the same thing, I'm.
Yeah, the, the, the. I don't know if it's going on in this one, but.
Well, let's wait till Steve's back because. Be specific, I'm not on it. Trying to back.
So what I was saying, Steve, is that. I don't know why you're concerned about liability, but let's give that a give. It, it would have to be in relationship to the board doing something. It can't be in relation to the board simply listening to people or talking. So at the same meeting, rather than have counsel dragged in twice. At the same meeting where you want to speak to the employees and possibly to each other. You would have counsel present and before you took any action, if you were thinking about taking any action, you could seek his advice. And then he could tell you either immediately what his advice is, or he might say, you know, I have to look into it. But there's no reason to meet separately with counsel.
Yeah, I mean.
Well, there's a light, we already agreed that.
Well, Don, there's actually, there actually is a reason.
What, I can't even.
There actually is a reason. Um, it pertains to a document that we received yesterday.
No, that document, I'm familiar with that document, that doesn't, um, you require with that. Yes, John, I know what's going on in this town, like it or not.
You're actually conducting whatever, everything that's going on, actually, which is disturbing.
That doesn't change anything.
Well, yeah, it kind of does.
Wait, wait, so we just had a select board member accuse.
You said it, you know what the document said.
Accuse a member of an audience of, of conducting, of conduct, of manipulating these types of documents?
For what?
To hold an executive session on day X at this time.
It depends on Mazur's availability, it does.
I would, I would, I would try.
People make themselves available.
Can we do it on next Wednesday, is the sixth at noon? That gives plenty of time to give notice.
Yep, okay, that's good.
And I'll check with Mazur's availability?
Mm-hmm.
Or is everyone available when, next Wednesday, April, sorry, today's the sixth, next Wednesday, April thirteenth at noon?
Yes.
Okay, so I will check with Brian Mazur to see if he is also available. And then he will likely drag executive session notices, which he will send to Steve and Steve will do what Steve does. Yeah?
And these are for individual staff. I'm just curious.
Yeah, I mean, well, we had executive session.
It's like, it's kind of like a.
Well, it is an executive session, subject.
Okay, yeah. Okay, I second that. Any discussion, you guys know the names?
I vote yes.
This, and to restate the motion. We're just meeting next Wednesday, the thirteenth at noon. Any executive sessions? Uh, I'll vote yes. And I'll check on Brian Mazur for his availability.
So, uh, can we do some minutes or?
Yeah.
Let's do them in order, three, twenty-three, twenty-two.
That doesn't prevent you from sending that letter to counsel.
I read it.
He's prepared to address it also.
I've already, I've already, I've already sent it. I said, all, all letters from attorneys I've sent on to council.
So that letter is a public document now that we discussed it.
Point of order, can I please start the bathroom?
Yes.
That's a good one.
Watch your hands. Well, at least the markets are coming back.
How's crypto doing?
Oh, I don't, I don't follow it, but I, I, I don't have it on my list. But, um. I just, I watch the airlines and. JetBlue wants to, wants to buy Spirit, which I, I don't know why anybody in their right mind would want to buy. With one merger.
It's a thing, a, a comet line away from a whole lot of comets. I mean, they all make comets, Spirit, that would be a good.
Well, Spirit did, so Spirit was actually, you know, you know, Spirit was before, it was Spirit, it was Value, Valuejet. Until Valuejet, that Valuejet plane blew up, um, because of the, the oxygen casks were never, were never inspected. And then they changed their name to Spirit. I won't, I went on one Spirit flight, I said I would never, never, ever, I don't even care.
Why is it so bad about?
Well, they, they're just, they discount, because they're discounted, because they. They discount everything, they discount the cleaners, they, they pack, every single seat is, is sold. Um, and they just. It's just a miserable experience, they still bought all Valuejet, uh, planes, which at the time were probably about ten years, ten, fifteen years old. So, I mean, the nice thing about JetBlue was that they, that they use air bosses, actually, actually, uh. A friend of mine knew Dave Neilman, who started JetBlue, and uh, uh, and we met once and, and they're, I mean. Okay, all right, we're back to the time. Uh, all right, so we're gonna go jump into three, twenty-three, twenty-two. So this is the ones that you made some changes to, Justin, and then I. Really? I only added.
Due to COVID.
Due to COVID? I think that was it. Um. I just wanted to be clear to the folks that I didn't want to ruin the pavilion, I just feel like it's nasty breezy. So, um. I would make a motion to accept minutes of three, twenty-three, twenty-two, uh, as amended by Justin and myself.
Second.
Yes?
Yes.
Abstaining.
Okay.
Wait, so with, these were the minutes that you said you needed more time to read? And, and that's the reason why we couldn't.
I'm focused on one item, particularly a lot of utmost importance to me.
No, but.
You know, I'm sorry that I don't get to everything within a week.
No, I just want to say for the record that you were pre, prepared to, to vote on this last week, but you said you needed another week to review it. Now you're saying?
Well, I'm not sure if that's true.
No, that's exactly what you said, that's exactly what you said, I would hear.
I didn't get time to do it, I've got a life outside. Unfortunately, just like. Fortunately.
So.
I apologize to the public that I didn't vote the approved minutes.
And minutes are, are, are important. Jeremy, should you?
You, I understand.
I got a life outside too, so I don't know.
You know what, so do I, so does Justin, so does Melissa, so does Don. Um, we all have lives outside, we all have things to do, this is, I actually. Was able to review this. On ten minutes. Okay, so I'm gonna, so, uh. Hold on there. Okay, so here's another set of minutes for three, thirty, twenty-two. I see there's been some changes by Justin, some changes by myself. Wait, there is a red, oh.
Sometimes I, I think mine.
Uh, okay, wow, all right, lots of things, let's see. It's May sign, one B. New business, one B. Fine. Which is fine. Just these. Minutes. Fine. Okay. Just that. Nothing, so I mean. Yes. You feel like, like, yeah, maybe permanently. Why you added that, Justin? Mission, deception, suit, US commerce. Yes. I think it's fine. Meaning it. Okay, uh, the, the motion was not seconded, Justin feels, based on the laws read during the meeting. Oh, not yet, who, oh, so they got rid of it by. And Chris Blair, this is what's your addiction? Fine. Oh, well, here, so, okay, since we have the two parties that, uh, that involve, uh, the minutes state, um. Don Coburn and Jeremy Rowett, it's not going to put you guys on the spot, sorry, um, Don Coburn and Jeremy Rowett, they got you a spat about. Whether there is an appointment of such an agent would be in a consultant or employee, with Jeremy insisting it would be a consultant, that's fine, it's in the minutes.
Well, I don't need to revisit that work. Well, I don't need to revisit that work, you guys.
Okay, well, but the next line is, is, is the, the, the exchange between you and Mr. Coburn, when Don, so there's, so.
Where are the four?
I like to keep it in, but, um, Justin would like to take it out at number four. When Don Coburn told Jeremy he didn't know what he was talking about, Jeremy told him to shut up, shut up, Don. Uh, Melissa asked the chair, sergeant was needed, be called, keeps peace, the chair, instructed everyone to be civil. So I'd like to keep that in, that, I mean, if, if, talking about transparency.
Who said that? The videos, the videos posted online, Steve. I don't think that these sentences, uh, the fact that the first sentence got into a spat, you know, is all that needs to be said. That has nothing to do with what the board's decision was. It doesn't. And the video, we're not not being transparent, the video is posted to you.
But why, but why, but why did the chair instructed everybody to be civil? The deadline only makes sense, you know why the chair instructed everybody to be civil.
Because they got into a spat.
I don't remember you saying that, but. I don't remember you saying everybody needs to be civil.
I do.
I do.
You do?
The video online has thirty-five views. It's widely available, anyone can watch it if they want.
That's not the official record, this is.
I know, and I don't think that this needs to be part of.
Well, but, if, 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 if there was a, if there was an exchange, I mean, we always, we always post what Mickey says, I mean, if there's an exchange between two individuals, now they're both in a room.
We are recognized it by saying Don Coburn and Jeremy Rowwitz then got into a spat, and the rest of that sentence, it's, nothing's being hidden. How much are you gonna dwell on those types of things?
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not doing anything, I'm just saying that that's what we said.
We didn't have four sentences about it?
That was said, that was said in the minutes, that was said in the meeting, I just want to save the meetings. Jeremy told me to shut up, uh, it was in the minutes, don't tell me to shut up.
There was also entire conversations missing. There was a conversation from me saying we had no authority to appoint their agent, and Don said, John's absolutely right.
Why didn't you, why didn't you amend it?
Why isn't it done properly to begin with?
So.
That's my issue with these minutes, they're always inaccurate. And that's why I'm not gonna vote for these minutes either, because it's missing complete conversation.
The YouTube video is online, nothing's being hidden from anybody. It has thirty-five views in one week.
Well, listen, so I, I.
There's no.
Yeah, we should do it more often, that's, people are watching now.
Just, let's just.
We don't get, we don't get any royalties, so that's, I, well, probably not, yeah.
Don, are you willing to have, to have this conversation exercised from the?
It says.
I must tell you that, that you've asked me, I, I kind of object to the word spat, because like the report that you got from the investigator, those kind of broad conclusive terms or characterizations, and, and I don't even think that's quite accurate.
Swallow?
We have disagreement, I wouldn't call it a spat, but in any case, I, I have no objection to the entire thing not being, it doesn't matter at all, it doesn't have to do with camp business.
Ruh rah rah. Melee? And, oh, oh, I'll leave it.
So I don't care about it.
I'll leave it, I'll leave it.
My three.
I'll leave it, I'm gonna just, okay, all right, so I'll say.
I, I, I bet Jeremy would even apologize for having used the phrase, I shut up, right after I apologized for saying, excuse me.
Actually, that would be, that would be very nice.
Right after I apologized for saying, I shouldn't have said, you don't know what you're talking about at all, I should have said you are incorrect in this respect. And I apologize to not.
We raised voices by both parties, and I accept your apology if you want, and, and I'll apologize to you if you accept, except mine.
Only yet. I'll accept your apology.
Okay, great, so, so I'd like to keep this in the next minute, so, that, because it's important.
Okay, well, this is important.
Well, it's so important.
It's not, it has already been adjudicated on the Google, I mean, everybody's had a chance to talk about it, I think, come on, we, I think we're all ready to move on, and I would suggest to take it out soon, but it's up to you guys, obviously.
Okay. I'm gonna, so. I'm taking it out, we're taking it out, especially since you opposed it, especially since you opposed it.
Okay. I think we're. Okay.
And, and, but, but unless you can come up with a better word than spat.
But you know, Don, we could do like a snack thing, and then we can, we can get a lot of views.
Yes, yeah, uh, listen, if you.
I'm going on eighty-four in a few days, I don't do stuff.
Yeah, that, that was a joke, everybody gets that, right?
I need to approve these minutes. Okay, all right, all right, all right. Although, if you really want views, you guys can duke it out.
No, I'm not, I'm sorry for bringing up the views, the only reason I brought up is to say is nothing's being hidden in the minutes, it's all out there.
It is.
It's by public.
Most definitely out there, yep.
Um, uh, let's see.
So what did we agree on finally?
Take it out, take it out.
Okay.
But I think, Justin, it's a little inaccurate to say because it's on YouTube, therefore it's transparent. The minutes, the standard for the minutes is to do what the open meeting law says you have to do, and it doesn't have anything to do with whether.
I completely agree, and I think that these meet open meeting law standard.
I agree with that.
I don't think that every disagreement between residents who aren't even on the select board needs to be mentioned.
I, I agree.
I, I don't think they need to be, that's required by open meeting law.
I agree.
No, I think what's required by the open meeting law is that a person not in attendance should be able to read these minutes and understand what exactly happened at the meeting. And if you, if you withhold entire conversations in points, well, that's a problem.
Yeah, except the, the law clearly doesn't require that all conversations be in there. So, you know, the minutes are a summary, John, you can't get every word in.
It just gotta have major points of discussion, which, can we just approve these minutes, please?
Yeah, 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 I just, we get a summer seven over here, you, you, you're running a lot of stuff over here, it's all good, I just wanna make sure I'm reading.
But, but John, just, if you were, if you were in, I, I, if you were in agreement with Don about whose purview the hiring is, I mean, if you wanna put it in.
Yeah, put it in, put it in.
Put it in, I mean, if, if you made the point, put it in.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just. Put it in.
Ultimately, the minutes are the select board, and whatever you decide is what you've created.
Yeah, I mean, but you don't have to put it in either, right, you brought it up.
It's not just a run election, what happened, so there's.
And I don't think, you guys were in agreement, I, I, it's up to you guys, but.
I know.
I, I know it's up to us, and I wish we could just.
Move on.
Okay.
Like I wasn't even there.
Okay, good. All right, so I make motion to accept minutes as amended by Justin and myself.
Second.
Uh, and. I vote yes.
Yes.
Well. Uh, now, uh, for these other ones, um, do we have to go to executive session to accept, to, uh, to adopt, to approve a few minutes?
You should, in case there's anything in there that you're not gonna end up discussing, you know?
If there's anything. This is a three, twenty-three, let's see, if there's anything here that we need to discuss, that would include somebody that we're going to executive, we don't have to. I'm sorry.
The only thing that I'm confused about is on the three, twenty-three, six P M. The purple, I'm confused, I think the sentence is.
Yeah, it says, yeah, I meant for this, for this sentence, my purple sentence, to be the last sentence of.
Yeah.
Of it, so if that's okay. You got, yeah, it got stuck in the middle, I don't know why you did that. So. Move to. Paragraph. Other than that, um, if, if that's fine, I would, um, we can, we can. These, uh, these, these minutes. Make, make sure to approve these, these executive session minutes, but, um. They do, do they mention?
Which ones?
Individuals.
Three, twenty-three, three P M.
Twenty-three, twenty-two.
Six P M.
Six P M, correct. Well, you know what, it. Yeah, I would make the suggestion that this, this be sequestered until the end of the conference, until the end of the investigation. Since it actually discusses the investigation.
Yeah.
Okay, so I would make a motion to approve these minutes, but, but.
You need to go into executive session to do that.
What?
Otherwise, this is a public document.
We never put the sets of minutes that we approved, uh, as a document on the other one, which, I, I'm not saying we should.
All right, then, let's, let's go into executive session.
Do you have comments and questions from the public first?
Do we, wait, do we, do we need to, I mean, I don't know.
All right, all right, uh, questions of, of, for the public, Don, I'm gonna ask a question.
I have a comment, uh, I got the impression from a couple of comments, that you might be under the impression that there are times when you have to have a consecutive executive session. If you have that impression, I would plead with you to check with counsel, because I think you'll find that you never, ever have to have an executive session. The statute gives you the option of having an executive session if, if it's about one of the ten or twelve categories, it's never mandatory.
But if it includes one, if it's one of the twelve ones, you have to, you can't have, you can't have discussion, what?
Is it a tet not, nevermind.
Whatever.
It doesn't matter the number, but it's never mandatory, it's something that you do as a matter of discretion.
Well.
And then, of course, if it involves a person, that person can require that at the open, but you never have to do it.
Be that in this current environment, trying to be, you better be very.
Can we just approve these minutes in open meeting?
So.
I mean, it's really, it's really not a good deal.
Don, you're saying they can, if they want, right?
He's right.
Well, the only trouble is if you do it in open session, then it would become a public document, so whether you're ready to release it, you really have two issues on executive sessions, first, you approve the minutes, secondly.
All right.
You want to release it.
And, and under counsel's directive, um, any this, any few minutes that have to do with the turn ongoing conversation are not to be disseminated to the public until after the investigation has been concluded. That's for counsel. So.
It's not, well, that's not activity, that's what.
Well, that's.
It can't be disseminated until we, uh, conduct administrative action on the complaints.
Nope, actually, that's not what counsel's saying, so, um. What, then let's, let's just go to, so, so, if we're, if we're concluding with this meeting, we're just, we're gonna go to the executive session for two seconds and.
Well, you have to vote it, don't they?
I understand that, but I'm just talking to the public here before I kick it down.
It's time to go, but I wanna hear the motion.
What? So I make a motion that, that we, we leave public session, go into executive session, um, I mean, it's gonna be, the first, the first has the motion, and then we'll do a roll call. Motion is that we leave public session, go into executive session, I, do I have second?
Are we coming back in?
We are not going into, well, it's a, it's a very good point, Justin, we're not, we're not coming back into public session.
And why are we going in? And why are we going into executive session?
Uh, because it may, it's because it, because the, the, under, well, item one, it may include the name, um. Of, of an employee, um, and discuss the character reputation. It's at a, it's at a.
To approve minutes.
Uh, and to, to improve the minutes, but while we're approving the minutes, it, it may include the name of the employee. That's unreasonable, you want, you'd like me to read it?
No, no, I just wanted to say, because I, I can, it's really for approving minutes.
Discuss the reputation, character, physical condition, or mental health, or the professional competence of an individual, or discuss the discipline or dismissal of or complaints or charges against an official, employee, staff member, or individual.
I'll second that motion.
I will guess.
Yes, no?
So, we're gonna go to executive session, thank you very much for coming.
Take your roll call.
Roll call.
Justin Maycock is present.
Steve Voice is present.